Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Grafton Select Board Meeting.
A full meeting to order on Monday, June 3rd at 6:00 PM at the Town Hall upstairs. We need a motion to adopt the agenda and I'd like to make one change to it again. And then before the animal contract, so we can sign it tonight along with the Williams Sheriff. Somebody make a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
No.
Sorry. Any discussion? All favorites say aye, opposed? We have the minutes of Minutes of Monday, March 15th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented? If they are not, somebody make a motion to accept the minutes of May 15th. Second. If there's no further discussion, all favorites say aye, opposed? Okay. The Williams County Sheriff Contract. And the, and
So both of those we've budgeted for and the crisis hasn't, haven't changed. I did want to make a note under authorized personnel to request services under that, this agreement. I wrote the town administrator and advised the board members. That's what's been done in the past. I just wanted to let you know that that's what's on this too. So I just need your signature on the last page of both.
This me? Do we need a motion to accept these?
I think just your signatures.
No, but I think we need a motion to accept. Somebody make a motion to accept the State of Vermont Williams County Sheriff Contract for this year and We have two here?
Ones that animal control, the, the sheriff.
Oh, okay, yeah. For the animal control after the sheriff for the year. Somebody make that motion? Second. Any other special on the contracts? If not, all favorites say aye, opposed? So I'll just sign the contract over to the minute here. The next, the, the, each said a great for the traffic ordinance public hearing.
Him, Wendy and I talked today and I noticed has to be put in the Grafton news. So the next one isn't until the first week of July. And then after that, everybody needs to be notified 15 days prior to the date of the meeting. So it's looking like we could have the public hearing for July 17th, which is the second select one meeting. We probably do that at 5:30.
Is anybody okay with that? What is this going to say? I'm sure. We haven't said that day. We don't have. There was a change. We, we heard, we forgot from everybody now. Yeah. You know, Sheriff, we didn't Well, get it right this, I need some other, you should make the recommendations that the Sheriff Department wants or sit chats and be correct. Or we should leave it down by law, whichever one. We're going to have another public meeting. Everybody's going to come in, everybody's going to have a different sub opinion. And what are we going to change it again? 35 days later, change it again because people aren't happy? Make a decision, call it a day. No, we have to, we have to make a decision. Otherwise, if we don't amend the ordinance, then we don't get fines. Okay, so we talk, okay, so we talking amend the ordinance to, like you just said, oh, get the fines or we consider changing the traffic back again, or both? Give me that, so.
I think what probably should be done is like the ordinance that we have now is what you're going to come forward with. And then during the public hearing is when you make your changes. You take in whatever the public has to say and whatever the board has to say and then adopt it and adapt it.
That's what I, that's how it gets one.
Intend for it takes affection, got 30 days to publicize it and the board can actually take place. But you've got to have the ordinance if you already got now to make amendments to it and have a public hearing.
Right, that's the exact process we used last time. It just, that just has been such a fiasco. You gotta make a decision, call it a day, and vote for it. Right? Well, I mean, I do something. It means you can leave it alone. That had to wait there. Well, unlike last time, now we have recommendations to the B Tran and the Sheriff's Office for forward stuff. We did not have that last time. And we cannot vote on that tonight without having the forum to sound what you said. Yeah, we have to have a public meeting. Have a meeting and we can, we want to make a change again. Just say if you have another public meeting, you're going to have what we already know about. What's, we exactly know what's not happening, but that's all we have to do with. Well, it doesn't really make any difference because somebody could object to three ways up on some of their, some of the, so you got to figure out what, what do you want to do? I guess my question is, a motion can't be made tonight to accept the Sheriff and the B Tran's recommendation and move forward with that. It can't be done? No. Okay. No, you have to have, the public has to have have, have, you have to hear them first. Then, then you can either accept what they want or do whatever you want. Just seems like we're driving around dead horse around the helmet. But I think that's the proceed.
I almost think two, 5:30, we get out more, it's not going to be enough time. Because you're going to do your public hearing, then you'll go and then have it on the agenda for this one board meeting. And ask for your guidance and then go down about, I don't think a half an hour is going to give you enough time. So that's just my.
Well, why don't you do this? Why don't you just have a public hearing at, at five and have the select one meeting immediately after that, whatever it's in? So if it goes on for an hour, then fine. It goes off, it went by minutes, it's still okay.
Okay, as long as you warn it that way. As long as you warn it that way.
Yeah, parent, you're going to, so we don't finish the problem like last time. Okay. July 17th.
17th. So I'm assuming more than that the, somebody from B Tran or the Sheriff's going to be at this hearing? I could ask them to be, but they've, they've both given us written notifications.
You okay with that, Ellen?
Yeah.
All right, so the next item is the subject company letters. We all got a copy of it. So we're, right now in the next round for the people who think so. Is anybody okay with the, with the letter or?
This will be sent out to the people that their subjects were last launched in 2019.
Correct.
How many have been sold and, you know? I don't have the list, but I think it's like 20. A lot of them are within foundation and we were one of them, so it's going to bump it down to like 15 maybe?
The town of Wanda didn't have a pot?
Yeah, we were due, but we did it last week, so we're good.
Did you find some or that's one? Do we need a motion for this? That's the one we said we have.
Yeah, I'm just letting you know that's going to be.
There's, there's any objection to the letter or this now?
What's it fine again? If they don't? Is it immediate access? They don't, but they have certain time. I'd have to look back at what the ordinance says. In my head.
They have almost a year to do it.
Yeah, they haven't until at least October 1st. And then notify the health officer. And then that's when we, if they still don't listen to you.
It's civil penalty of $25 for each offense. On these, and it can be But we, we, all the people who they've all done, right? So we're, nobody's in, everybody's in compliance. All right, the next item is the additional wage worth ran? Are they on them?
Erin is on, yes.
And what about the, the other ones? She, she said she had another meeting for, but she'll, she's going to come on to say it on there. So she should be on shortly. Okay, Seth, you want to kind of explain what's going on here?
So, sure, so the Time Bond, in order to move on to the 60% phase, has asked for, they need additional money of 18,000. Excuse me, the budget increased for an additional $34,300. The initial amount, the original amount was 18,400. So now it's a total of 52,700 in that 60% phase. There's been a lot of questions about what they've spent, what the buildings have been, the buildings have been 27,700, that original amount. Now they need this additional 34,300. Now, as far as payment of the, of the town has to repay any of this money or how the funding works. The town will never have to repay any of this money. Either the original grant, the total grant was 92,500, or this additional amount of 34,300 unless the town moves forward with the project. Now, this additional 34,300, the town may never have to repay it because there is a Clean Water State revolving fund loan that is available to us from the, you know, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. And that's a hundred percent loan forgiveness. So that, this additional money they're asking for, as long as we get our application in on time, which we need to do promptly, we will never have to repay. But if we went through the original program, we would have to repay that 34,300 on top of the 92,500. Only if, again, only if construction moves forward. So there is no obligation to the town unless we go forward with the system. And this additional money will be totally forgiven under the, this, this CWS RF fund program. And this comes from our conversations with Erin who's on from Time Bond and from Emily, Emily Hackett from the state of Vermont. Last thing, which I think has also been an issue is who will ultimately be responsible for paying for the system? And it's the 80 and it will be only the parcels that are hooked up to the system. There's 85 parcels reporting to Erin. That's who will be responsible for it. And she sent us an email that laid out a conservative estimate of the cost for this. It would be $36.88 per month, per parcel, or $30.03 per month, per parcel. If you did it all into the, all the same, over 30 years. So that's a lot of information I just threw out, but this is all from, based on our conversations with Erin and my, my personal conversation with Emily Hackett from Vermont. Erin's also on.
How did they just join?
And Emily's on too, so they can probably answer the questions better than I can, but that was the information we've all gathered.
Seth, I have another question. Why would you take out a 30-year mortgage on this or loan when the system is only here for 20 years?
I don't know. This is, this is straight from Erin's email. I didn't have to, but it's on there, yeah, so. That's what I said.
Erin, can you answer her question?
I was trying to give an example of what the mortgage is available through the Clean Water SRF and the impact of $34,000 on that. So it was, it was a example of the impact of $34,000 to the parcel owners who would be paying for it.
Well, why for 30 years? When, when the system is only good for 20 years?
The service life of different components is varies, but that's the loan availability is a 30-year loan.
So I can jump in a little bit. The Clean Water SRF loans are typically about 30 years in length.
This is Emily?
Yep. Sorry, I'm Emily Hackett from the Clean, I'm from the state, from the Clean Water SRF program. I'm also in charge of the ARPA grant as well and I'm the design engineer for WID on the project. So I, I'm sorry I'm late. I have four select word meetings tonight, so I quickly got through one. I don't know, Seth, kind of where you guys are at, if you have any further questions about our discussion.
Yeah, I just gave, I just gave a brief overview of what you said, so if you could explain it further, what this, the loan is and how it's, and how we, the town went up to pay it back suddenly?
Yep, so, so we have a three-step process. Step one is planning, which is where you guys are at. And as part of your step one, you have what's called an engineering planning advance loan, they call it. And, but it's a, only, the loan transfers to a grant if you go to construction. If you do not go to construction, you're not obligated to pay it back. That's why they call it, it's from a loan to a grant. So those are not, those funds are not obligated to be paid back by the town. So that's how currently the planning has been going. There are two options to amend the planning. One is to amend the, the engineering planning advance. That will take six months. It requires a grant writer. Or going into the Clean Water SRF program for a loan with a hundred percent forgiveness, up to $125,000 per project per year. So the money that, I forget the value off the top of my head, I just looked at it too. Is it 36.3? Erin?
34,300.
Yeah, so that would be eligible for subsidy. We can't call it a grant because that would require a lot more paperwork, so it's called subsidy. And right now, we're kind of at the end of our, we go by the fiscal year of July 1st through, so we're in the fiscal year 23. And we have what's called an intended use plan. As part of that intended use plan, a certain money, amount of money gets set aside for subsidy for projects like such. And we are currently, I believe, we have right now for the remainder of this IUP and then this kind of the start of the next fiscal year, because our IUP is running a little behind for the next one. We have, I think it was like $230,000 in subsidy. I have one town that is submitting paper, loan paperwork tomorrow, so they will take some of that subsidy. And it is a first come, first served basis. My recommendation would actually to be come, to come in and get that subsidy because you are eligible and it actually benefits the town because you're not having to wait six months with a tight timeframe with the ARPA. You're not having to use the ARPA money for your grant for, to keep that more towards construction. And it allows the project to move forward. Come the next IUP, the project would be eligible for another $125,000 roughly. It might be a little less or more in the next IUP. I don't know the exact value. But it's a per project per year. And that would allow to get through, you know, step one is covered by the EPA and this little amendment. And then that $125,000 for the next IUP could use, be used towards design. And that's kind of how our program works. So do you guys have any questions?
What was the number, the, the amount of this loan in reject for 30 years? What was that going to be?
That is based on what Erin her email to me. 1,124,500. There will be a 1, 1 million, yeah, 92,000.
Maybe something's changed, or I thought we were about $34,000 short originally from our grants.
It was a, it was a math exercise to show the impact of $34,000. It was not in any manner a real number. It was just if there's a million dollars or a million and $34,000, what's the dollar impact to the 85 rate payers? It was a math exercise to show, I think it's pennies or a dollar that it impacts the overall rate to the payers. So there was a substantial concern about this $34,000 and I was trying to emphasize that when you look at it in terms of loan repayment, it's, it's dollars as far as the impact of a potential rate. We don't have that number yet. It was, that's why it's a nice round million dollars because it's a fictional made up number. That was a math exercise to show the impact of $34,000.
It's a dollar 15?
Dollar 15.
So that figure really doesn't have anything to do with the total cost of the project?
At all. It's just to show the impact of $34,300.
Yeah.
I have a question on the 34,000 loan, if it's called a loan. And Emily stated that the principal is to be paid back. A loan usually accrues interest. Is there interest on this loan? And I know she said principal does not have to be paid back, so is there interest that's accrued on this loan? And it's, so this is step two, but five, are we going to have to be going back asking for more from this year? Loan grant?
So the EPA only gets, it, the EPA never, if you don't go to construction, you're not obligated to pay back the EPA. That, that's actually why we have the EPOS because we have a lot of communities that want to do some planning, but may not get to construction. So that's why Lynette Cladon in our office set the project up that way originally before I think ARPA was even involved. And amending that, and we could amend that for this, but it will take a long time because the paperwork is completely different. And it's run kind of through a different system and with us, so we'd have to have grant writers. And I can tell you right now, the grant writers are really hard to get. The Clean Water SRF loan, right? Has the subsidy and we can't call it a grant because of how much paperwork is required if we call it a grant, so we call it subsidy. So that subsidy for the project would be forgiven, that 34,000, whatever the number was. If the loan is submitted before the next IUP. If it's not submitted before the next IUP and we wait until the next round, take that 34,000 off of whatever the subsidy will be. Right now it's 125,000 that you're eligible for. That's less money for design down the road if the project moves forward.
So is there no interest on it even though the word loan is used?
No. No, because one, what happens, yeah, what happens when it turns to, let's say you guys were to go to construction. When you guys go to construction, I'm going to say. It would turn from what we call an EPA loan to a PC grant, a pollution control grant. And then it becomes a grant, so you're not paying it back. So either way, you're not obligated to pay it back because it either becomes a loan that's kind of forgiven or a grant.
Are there any more questions for either Bang Mau or Emily? Go ahead, Teresa.
I think I heard that 84 parcels would be hooked up?
88, I go on.
85.
85. And how was that number determined?
Erin, can you answer that?
The, the current proposed through our district was what was presented at the 30% meeting and it includes a very specific buffer zone from what's established as the core village area. I think it's a quarter mile outside of that. And parcels that were identified as additionally within that as small parcels or high groundwater and, and other geographic features. But it's consistent with what was presented, I think, at our 30% meeting.
And is there a map of that?
There is.
Is that acceptable?
Yes, they, they candided out the, the 30% meeting. We can get a map if you want, I'm more than good.
And we're, we're working very much so to get to the 60% meeting so we can talk more about what that area looks like, but.
That makes sense of the, the village would pay for the 84 parcel, but what, who decides that? So I'm just curious to know who decides that?
I also want to know how many other people these are included in this system or maybe why? Like somebody like me would have to pay just as much as what's your pays or has them gathering earthstone with all those people that are down all the time? I mean, how are we going to determine how much people here?
Well, let's see, first of all, I guess, let's get the question.
So I So I can speak a little bit to Erin's constraints a little bit. Some of it is tied to ARPA funding and, and the Clean Water SRF program eligibility items. So ACCD, which is the Agency of Commerce and Community Development, I think it's the acronym. They work with towns and they set what's called a designated village center. And so Grafton has a designated village center. That includes what they call like a neighborhood or we'll call it a buffer. That's a quarter mile outside of that district. And anything within the quarter mile buffer can be included in the project and be considered eligible for funding. Including, that includes the ARPA funding. The only thing that can be outside of that buffer is the conveyance to a disposal field and the disposal field. Anything associated with the disposal field, whether it's a pump station or anything like that. That kind of sets the tone a little bit. Now, there are towns who are looking outside the buffer, but that is strictly a loan eligible between design and construction. So if, if you guys were to determine an area outside of that buffer wanted to be included, Erin's time and the construction of that would not be, would not be eligible under the ARPA grant or any subsidy. That would be strictly a loan. So in order to kind of keep the project, I think manageable in some ways and eligible through all the funding sources, staying within that quarter mile buffer is an advantage to the community. Ultimately, it's the, it's the town's decision on if connections to that system are, are mandatory or if it's a volunteer system. And that ultimately is what the town decides. Erin will do the design based on what decisions are made and who is going to be connecting to the system.
Do we know if we have a site that'll work now?
Again, that, we have some potential sites that we think now will work. At least are feasible and feasible in coordination with also potential drinking water improvements.
Erin, I, I would like to ask you about that, the issue that I raised earlier about the impact of the potential impact of the changes in the federal drinking water standards on a town like Grafton, if there is one.
So I had sent an email back just because, to you Seth, because I certainly don't have any line into what the state of Vermont is doing and just to be, and Emily is also with wastewater, not with drinking water, and those are two, as you know, I am, we, with this project is definitely feeling the impact of two totally separate entities. So, but I, if you, if you're asking Seth for me to summarize just what you and I had talked about by email. So previously, the, and Emily, jump in if you want to, but I'm going to go just straight off on what's happening right now. Okay, Vermont's current standard, backing up. You could Google it for a little more background, but there has, I think, very prominently been in the news across the country and including in Grafton itself. Forever Chemicals, which are kind of Um, Forever Chemicals, which are kind of uh the production of Teflon and nonstick items. Um, they even, you know, coated the inside of pizza boxes and microwave popcorn. Uh, but Teflon, some Gore-Tex, like in your winter jacket, that type of material. That's a chemical that has become very um in the forefront of the news because it does not go away. Um, and it has in some cases been linked uh to health conditions. So that's the chemical we're talking about. Um, and currently the state of Vermont has a number which is twenty parts per trillion, uh meaning uh twenty parts in a trillion parts in your drinking water, but it's a combo of five different of these PFAS chemicals. The EPA on March fourteenth published a um proposed new drinking water regulation for the PFAS chemicals. And they're very independent um of four parts per trillion um for uh P F O A, uh four for PFAS and then for the remaining one. Um, and so uh one hazard index, I guess, it's a it's a little bit different, but that's a much lower standard than what currently is in Vermont. So one could assume Vermont is going to adopt the more rigid standard. Um, but I just wouldn't be in a place of any like inside information or anything along those lines. Um, because uh, the EPA has not finalized their regulation. They anticipate doing so by the end of twenty twenty three. But um until EPA finalizes theirs, I don't think we're gonna see states start adopting it.
Yes, I can give you a little bit of a background from what we know and the chatter that we're hearing internally. Um, so there they have their comment period or in their comment period related to those values. We're hearing from EPA that those standards will be in place by the end of the year. Typically, the state of Vermont takes some um either the EPA standard or stricter. Um, that's just been kind of what they do here in Vermont. And it sounds like this is gonna be considered a primary um contaminant. Um, so that's really important related actually to this project in some ways. Um, Erin and I have kind of talked a little bit, knowing that if we if the fire pond site, the park site there is used, that there was some uh talk that we may have to relocate a couple drinking wells, which happens to be across the street from the school, that area, and that's where the contamination is. So we have kind of kicked around possibly a combination of things for the project. Um, we have to have, as you know, I think some of you were in the meeting in October when drinking water came, Megan Young. Um, and she talked about the concern she had on the uh the T M F, the Technical, Managerial, Financial capacity of the town to be able to do that. Um, we internally uh in the village program are having some very direct conversations at this point with them, um, because we have multiple projects that need um relocation of drinking water wells. And um we're thinking that Grafton um with the PFAS contamination can't be ignored at this point as part of the project. So um, we're kind of working that in the background until we know, until I know a little bit more. That's all I can kind of say. I'm not sure which way drinking water is gonna go. But I think the fact that the contamination level is higher than what the new standard is gonna be is gonna be a a key part of that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, these eighty five people are parcel, are they gonna have a choice if they decide they don't? They have a working system, they just put it in a separate system? Are they gonna be forced to hook onto it or or pay for it?
That and that's really the decision of the community moving forward and how um the project gets voted upon. And so our anticipation is that um we're clearly going to delineate the area that could require um or uh make sense as a service area. And then that's the um point of the project moving forward is to be able to present it and get uh town consensus before moving forward. So there's lots of opportunities to provide feedback on that.
What, and Lindy asked a question earlier about the the A V N Bs. Uh, which is a good question because obviously the usage at those properties is much higher uh than if it's the the regular, let's say, single family home.
Or a second homeowner who's already there here. That's the other thing. Yeah, so.
That will need to be looked at.
So I I think the question, Erin, is the is the issue of how the cost would be distributed among the eighty five parcels? And that would that be something that the town would have to figure out later on?
Absolutely. Um, how the the sewer use laws and billing, but I I think um, you know, personally, when there's not, um, you know, right now individual wells, your water consumption, individual septic, you're responsible for it. So if you have a leaky toilet and you burn your well pump up or you dunk kitty litter down into your septic tank, you're only hurting yourself. So not having any feedback loop for your water usage when you're now part of a community system. Um, it's not as easy with drinking water for wastewater, but there absolutely are methodologies of monitoring usage. And I I do think that that should be a strong consideration is how is the it going to be billed? And how can usage be taken to consideration? Um, there absolutely are things, um, pump runtime and meters that can work with wastewater systems. And um, I know we're in the Northeast, it's a water rich area. We probably are all complaining about too much rain sometimes. Uh, then not enough, but uh, you know, water conservation is important and uh frankly, you know, a lot of people can be very water conscious and one person can just leave everything running and neither of those uh all those things should be taken into account. So I think paying for what you use is very important.
Another question, no matter what system we go with, I know we're picking everyone. These eighty five people that are gathering septic systems, are they gonna be able to use their existing systems and just hook up for this? Or they're gonna need a completely new type of system on their own or change their own in order to hook into your system?
Well, we'll present more information on this, but our recommendation is to use something that impacts the plumbing on the site as little as possible. So it's as easy to hook up. So that'd be something that's uh catching up in the backyards. Where your service is typically leaving right now and heading towards your existing septic tank. Very challenging to 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 redo plumbing um to to do something else.
This is Charles Bowman. Is it appropriate to talk uh from the public about the water system at this time? I don't want to step in if it's not.
No, go ahead, Charles.
All right, thank you, Joe. I know Erin and Emily uh know of my situation. Um, and I think it's now affecting uh homes on Pleasant Street and on School Street. Uh, and I I don't really want to get away from the fact that in two thousand and eighteen in September, uh, those homes, including mine, were all uh received letters from the state indicating that there was a request of various school systems to voluntarily have their well tested and Grafton uh agreed that the well at the Grafton School would be tested. That test resulted in the PFAS situation arising and the um uh they're now looking for a place to uh build a new well and there are filter systems at the school. The way I interpret the letter that I received was that if the PFAS testing of those wells of the homes surrounding the school failed, um, the state would be responsible to put in filtering systems in each home that failed. Now, my system failed um either once or twice and the and the testing, it goes on quarterly. And then it was very close to to failing on other times with the new federal standard. Uh, I'm sorry, I don't want to be an alarmist, but uh my 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 well fails over and over and over again with the new standard. And I believe that from the results I've seen from the other uh wells that were tested and then those that testing was abandoned because they passed, they will fail now under the federal system. So um what I'm hearing, I think, is something a little bit different than what I thought I understood was the state's responsibility, which was that if it failed, they would be responsible. I I'm and and I'm hearing from Kim Crawford of the state that there is a holdup because where's where the town is now speaking of putting in different water systems in addition to the uh septic situation. Um, I I would like it to be clear that the that the state should still be responsible for those um homes that surround the school, um, because that's what the letter said. And you know, I I know from what I just heard from Erin and Emily that they've had uh various conversations with the state regarding the water and uh I I I I can't, I don't seem to have the ability to get the state to fulfill what I see as their obligation. I don't think it should be going back to the system being re um looked at, the whole water system being looked at by the town. Right now, it should be that there should be filter systems put into those homes. And the town should be funding it. Um, that's, I'm done.
Can I give a little background? Because Erin and I have met with Kim um Caldwell uh with this with the sites management program and they're a different program than I than us. I think one of the things that's holding them up is they need to, um, and Erin, correct me if I'm wrong, this is how I heard it. They are trying to actually get a better handle on exactly where the contamination is uh the limits of it because it may be larger than what, you know, there is the potential, it could be larger than what the thought is originally. Um, I think you know, they were anticipating when they did the tent schools, anybody having PFAS and now they're finding a lot of places have PFAS. Um, and so while Ki- Kim knows that we are looking and talking with drinking water, part of the reason we kind of I brought to Erin the idea about if we're gonna have to do something over here and this is right across the street, part of it is because there is some additional funding in drinking water related to emergent contaminants, which is PFAS and their grant dollars. And so um you know, I hear what Charles is saying, that I definitely, Charles, would contact Kim again um and just keep contacting him about that, um, because I don't, we don't have any control over that related to the project, unfortunately.
Well, um, Emily, I appreciate that explanation and and um I think everything you have said is is accurate. And I think the town should know that, yes, there is a test going on to see where it is expanded to because just so everyone knows, there's wells, testing wells uh in the back behind my home, excuse me, my home. There are wells in front of my home. And there are wells out in the field uh that is um, you know, my our property um just divided by a a wall that runs along the school's property. And so they are trying to find out and in fact, they just came out again uh on June first to do the testing. And it it everything I read, the the as the PFAS has and it was accurately accurately explained by Erin is extremely serious. And it is called forever because if it gets in your body, it doesn't come out forever. So I just don't want and to to lose the fact that I think the state has committed to be responsible. Um, but I'm having trouble getting the state to agree to do the wells, excuse me, the uh if filter systems that they said that they would put in. And I just think it's getting that this this new standard is so low. Vermont used to be the lowest in the country. But now the standard is like a quarter of of what the Vermont standard was. It's terrible.
And we're going in five years.
Yeah, and and it's five years of water, which the state is supplying. But but it's uh it's uh, you know, getting a little old.
Well, again, Charles, there I think there's two problems. One, that the your contaminated well really has nothing to do with the with the the project that that we're here talking about today. And it's unfortunate um that you were in that situation and I think uh your beef is with the state and if Emily can tell uh that would be great, but I think we we have to, we have to deal with, we have to deal with now, which is, does the board want to continue the project and and take on the thirty four thousand three hundred dollars? Grant or loan that uh that doesn't have to be paid back so we can continue your study. And and that that would be needed to discuss there.
And and Joe, if I might, however, um, this has, this this definitely is part of our scope is is needing to revisit water. Because when we initially looked at water, it was just as Emily described, very clear that the fiscal and organizational responsibility of the town was not going to be strongly supported by uh the state drinking water folks. And especially now with this EPA change, that that is a challenging, but it's really set a different context. So we always were going to include and hadn't presented at the thirty percent of drinking water option. But at that time, the feedback was, it's going to be an extremely challenging road based on um regulatory um ability to get that system approved. And that might be a different attitude now. So there's um when we we'd say we've had um meant multiple items to go back to the drawing board, this is definitely one of those items that's included in that discussion.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any more questions? I I I just have one question. Uh, Emily, when do we need to get for this um C W S R F subsidy? When do we need to have the paperwork in, Brian?
A S A P, because we're at the end of that I U P fiscal year. Um, so you would need to fill out the loan application. Um, so Seth, if you want to, I can help connect you with Tom Brown and we can get a session together and look at it. You guys can look at it and have uh any questions. We can help answer it. They will, you will need uh what's called an alternate. Um, so maybe Morgan um could be that alternate authorized rep. Um, and partly that's because if something was to happen to someone and they could not be that authorized rep, there's a there's an alternative uh person there. So um if you want to reach out, I can help you work on getting that. And then the select board would need to sign that. So I'm not sure when the next select board meeting is.
Well, hopefully we can have a vote tonight and see the.
Okay.
Uh, Erin, you have a question?
I have a question. So if if we decide not to open the thirty fourth grade, does that mean we will no longer have an informational meeting? Does it end here and nothing else gets done? Or can we still have an informational meeting? And then apply for the thirty fourth grade even over the next fiscal year?
At this point, we have one informational meeting included in our budget. So we could have one, but we wouldn't have many, very many conclusions for you to present.
As I understand it, Kim, in order to in order to have this next meeting, they need to have further uh testing and they need this additional revenue and and that if that happens, then at the sixty percent meeting, they will have uh I'm not putting words in the in your mouth, Erin, but. Uh, I'm not putting words in your mouth, Aaron, but you'll have more detail to discuss, as I understand it.
But whether it was a contract that we signed, so, um, that. They used up the eighteen four. I mean, we don't know what they used up the eighteen four and asked thirty four more to not give us the information in this phase. And they did sign the contract, it's like we had to make sure we did a test quiz, because that was in the contract. This is not contracted.
So I can jump in here a little bit. So originally with the original contract, I forget how many. Um, usually the contracts have so many test pit sites. But because we've had to look at, um, you guys have looked at many sites. That is part of why, um, they have to go in for an amendment is to, for that additional work. Um, as well as. The sixty percent meeting, um, has to occur, which is, I think, what Aaron's talking about for the informational meeting. That is required in order to do an environmental review. Um, the project cannot move forward without that sixty percent meeting. And really until, um, the test pit information is finished and analyzed, there, there's nothing to present right now. Um, in terms of what an engineer would typically do. Um, I can tell you, because I'm involved in all the village projects. The amount to do step. One for this community is pretty small compared to, I have communities right now where their P, their step one. Is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, so that kind of gives you a, a frame of reference, um, of kind of how much a step. Like the PER. And then there's the environmental part of this value, and then there's the project coordination piece to this. And that project coordination piece, right, Aaron, just a little bit has been spent on that. Nothing on the environmental has been spent, it's all that preliminary engineering, um. Portion of the. Project, and there's a lot of engineering and things that need to go into from that thirty percent to the sixty percent. Because sixty percent is where they present all the alternatives, um, to the community, and that has to include. The disposal field, uh, sites. And I don't remember, Aaron, off the top of my head, how many you had originally in the original scope. Um. I think there were a couple, I just can't remember.
Yeah, and we were going to utilize, um, previous provided test pit data on two different sites. Um, and that was found to be insufficient, we needed to go back out and investigate, um. We've investigated multiple other sites at this. Point now.
Well, we, we already, uh, ninety, two thousand dollars, and we don't still have enough information, so we could have an informational meeting. So now we have another thirty four thousand dollars, so we can get some more information, I, I, are we gonna have enough information there?
Well, I think Aaron's saying that what the portion that they've spent of that ninety two thousand is the preliminary engineering part of this. She hasn't spent. And any of that ninety two that's associated with the environmental review, and she's only spent a little bit on the project coordination part of that ninety two. The way, um. The EPA and the Clean Water SRF works is that. We have what we call buckets, so you think of a house with rain coming down, and there's different buckets, and the rain can only go in one bucket. So the engineering part has been more intensive than originally thought, so that bucket is now kind of overflowing. And. Um. And there's that. That portion of the EPA is the part where this is really getting amended. Nothing else is getting amended, she still has all her money to do the environmental review and to do the project coordination, uh, part of this project.
The thirty four thousand dollars more, they're gonna give us enough information, so that we can have an informational meeting.
And, and the remain, so this total value, if you take the ninety two and the thirty four, that will get you all the way through to the end of step one. Which you have to complete before you can get to the design. And that includes the environmental review.
Yeah, but we just want to get to an informational meeting, I think this is.
But you leave the thirty four thousand, but you need the thirty four thousand to complete it, so you get your system to set.
That's what I mean, I mean, as there are no questions, is thirty four thousand enough to get us to meeting?
Yeah, I'll answer that question. It's gonna get us to an informational meeting.
Yeah, it, well, the thirty four thousand, three hundred get us to the sixty percent meeting, is that what?
Yeah, yes, I, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that was the question, yes.
Yeah, one, one more question, I mean, I'm not in there, so this is a theory, right, then. What engineering cost is there? At this point, when we don't have a site or any, a feasible site, sorry, we don't. Or a system to engineer, what, what exactly do you mean by engineering, preliminary engineering?
So a preliminary engineering report is required for all clean water SRF projects, it's part of the process. And it basically, it is a report that looks at, um, the needs. It looks at, um, any potential environmental impacts that are going to occur, so that when they go to do the environmental review. It looks at all, um, the alternatives. We require an alternative analysis as part of this. Um, and then a selection of the project, and it may be. We're gonna go with this type of disposal field, or there's a drip dispersal, and we're gonna go with step, a step system with a low pressure forcing. That kind of puts that together, there's engineering cost. There's, uh, operation and maintenance projection for costs, right, Aaron, I mean, there's. There's a lot that goes into this report. And we require a thirty percent, sixty percent, ninety percent final stamped PER. We comment and review the entire process. Um, and that's kind of some, some of this is because of what we require. The most intensive part is really between that thirty and sixty. Because it requires the hydrogeology part, it requires, um, the looking at all the alternatives that are possible. For the system based on, uh, not just the disposal field, but. You know, traditional, usually it's a traditional gravity sewer with pump stations versus a step stag system. Versus a step system with a low pressure force main, so there's a lot of that, looking at alternatives and putting costs to all those alternatives. As part of the engineering. And then when we get the, after the sixty percent informational meeting, the town will decide. What alternative they want to pursue. And then Aaron takes that from sixty to a ninety, though include potentially. Um, some conceptual design, starting to think about how they're gonna look at that, and then that. That proceeds to a final PER, uh, stamped and approved by the state. And that's required as part of our step one. The most, like I said, the most intensive part is really between that thirty and sixty. And it's hard, because village projects are a little bit of a, um, unknown beast at times. Um, as we know, the groundwater is really high and grafted in. Um, London Dairy is having the same issue where they had to look at more sites than originally anticipated. Um, and when Aaron talks about that they were gonna originally use some test pit information. Um, most likely, probably the indirect discharge program. Came in and said they wanted additional information, uh, on the test pits.
And to, and to observe them.
And to observe them, and that, um, and ultimately, the indirect discharge, um, group is who will be, uh, approving. Um, the, the permit either way, whether it's the regional program or the indirect discharge, because this is an ARPA project. Um, there's also a lot of pressure because of the ARPA deadlines too, so. There's a lot, um, that's going on, um, behind the scenes, and that's kind of the process. But the village projects are a little bit of a, an unknown beast. At times.
Okay, I think we've had enough questions here, and. I think that. There should be enough information for people to understand where we are and why we are committed to proceed. So somebody make a motion that we. Except that he, that we continue the process with the thirty four thousand dollar, three hundred dollar, right, um, whatever you want to call the loan. That it has no obligation to the town. In the event of a flag that person will fall and die, whatever it says, somebody want to make that?
I think the motion would be. To approve the thirty four, the additional thirty four thousand, three hundred dollar subsidy. And we're to move forward with the project. Of which the cost. The town will not inherit any cost.
Uh, and to get that, and to get to the sixty percent.
To get to the sixty percent report.
One second.
There. Do we have any discussion on the board?
So there's no scenario out there. Then if something happens, we don't have to pay that, there's no scenario. Um, unless we don't get approved for the subsidy, and we go through the initial funding, and if we build the project. Then we'd have to pay it back, that's it. So either, the only way we're gonna have to pay the money back is we don't get that, that subsidy, and we go through the original program, but then we only have to pay it back. If we go through this construction, we go through this, we get to the sixty percent page, and we hear her report, and we say. We don't want to do this. We don't ever have to pay it back. Did I state that correctly, Emily?
Yes.
Is it state or federal one we're talking about, you know, Sarah?
The, the, that, that, that federal, the, uh, the subsidy is a federal one, isn't that right, Emily?
Yep, the Clean Water SRF program is, and the ARPA program, they're federally run programs that we run by the state, that are. Run by us at the state.
Federal program run by the state, correct? Okay.
All right, so let's call for both. All in favor of, um, moving forward with the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both?
No.
Okay, so forty one. Okay, thank you very much, Emily, and, 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 um, now that we, we have an approval. Um, please get in touch with Morgan. And myself and Seth, and see how we can get this thing, uh, filed, so that we can move forward, and, and, um. And, um, Aaron, uh, let's, let's be in communication to see. When you're ready for the sixty percent, so we can set a meeting, um, you know, for the town, okay?
A- absolutely, Joe, I will email today some of the paperwork that you need to do it, and I know Emily, as she discussed with Seth. There's these other steps, and I know she's gonna be in touch very shortly. Uh, for the application paperwork, and one more thing, so we'll move on this right away.
And, and we'll, I'll email you in the morning, and I'll see if the, uh, Morgan, uh, if she's going through.
Say that one more time.
I would, I'll email you in the morning about.
Yep, sounds perfect, thank you guys, I appreciate it, everybody have a great night.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye, take care.
The next item is there've been a request that, um, they would like to plan a show up at the Wilson Park in the honor of Joel Ray. This, nobody has an objection to that, if not, make a motion that. It's okay for them to plan some of the, on, on town properties, whatever.
One second, Dan.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Uh, kiosk?
Yeah, Village Park, um, I'm more good math, I, we have that, um, a few I know. Uh, no, I directly sent the Village Park volunteers who are, have a plan to renovate the park. Um, I'm here to make a request for the kiosk that is, that is there, that is being replaced. To have a location change, but I want to go back for just a second, so it can be put into context. Um. First of all, the trails in the park are in great shape, I encourage you to go up there, they've been weed whacked, they've been gnawing on. Uh, there were about nine trees that came down in those heavy storms. Uh, Alan, the, the fruit took all of those down, including two really huge hen losses. It came down in the picnic area. And in the picnic area, which is a huge area, um, there's a bench that's on a ledge, that's an overlook. But on the other side, there is what I call the Rob Hall designated picnic table, because he built it years ago. Um, those two trees built right in between those two structures, so nothing but damage, so I took that as a good omen. On, on the stuff, um. So, other things, signage has gone in there, port-a-potty is gonna be in there any day now, uh, Pat Matt from GIA is, is working on that. For the boat dinner and the park. As we mentioned in the February meeting, which I think is the last time we addressed you, we're honoring this here as a centennial for the park. Because the stone pillar says nineteen twenty-three was the time at which it was given to the town. So it fits into things for us also, because we need to do fundraising now. Um, I'm hoping Morgan's our golden charm here, and with our third tribe getting a grant from the state, maybe it'll come through. Or maybe the whole brand will come through, I'm not. Not. Somebody optimistic on that, but we thought we would start a fundraiser, because we would like to do something for this centennial, we'd like to make something in the park. And the two big projects that we have as part of our plan. Is that accessible trail that goes up that hill, and that's the parking area that goes back to the picnic area. People who come from the village who walk to that walking entrance, take a look at that hill, and they just don't, they don't even go in. Because it's formidable to go up there unless you're lured up, because they see, they can see above. So we would love to have that accessible trail, that's really our number one priority. Um, the lean-to is gonna be built all by volunteers, uh, we have a couple guys who are pretty skilled that can do it, we just need the materials. We cannot do the accessible trail, the volunteers can't do that, that requires equipment. Um, way beyond what we have, so we chose the lean-to. If you get a chance, go down into the town office, take a look at the model, there's a full model that one of the guys did. And a lot of details of what we're trying to do. So. With this centennial, which were happening right before the town picnic on the twenty ninth of July. Um, the park is going to have something called Park Poker, Pat Poker. Um, just get you to walk the trails, stop at certain spots, get a little sticker, put it on a, on a card, bring it back. If you've got five stickers, you get five hearts. Best poker hand wins at the end of the day, kids can play too. And we actually got special cards for this special. So you later, um. The other thing we're gonna do is a time capsule. So we're gonna take a PVC. Sewer type pipe, seal it at one end. Be able to have people put little notes in, I'll put a wrapped in news in, any kind of ruminantous, and. What we'd like to do is put that. When we did for the new kiosk, this new kiosk, is put that in at the same time. Which brings me up to the request. If you stand at the walk-in entrance and look at that hill, way over to the right, not a view, is an old kiosk which we are replacing. And GIA gave the money for the materials, we already have the materials, it's being constructed already. Um, but we don't want it back in that spot, because you can't see it. No one knows, you get there to the front entrance, you have no idea where the trails are, if you don't know where the pools are, they all have the emergency numbers. So we want to move that closer to the walk-in entrance. Which is right on Fire Pond Road, lower than the parking area. Um. Little concern, can't put it in the street, put it in block plowing, uh, there's some strange wires. That are kind of there, and some titles and things that we need somebody to take a look at. And we just need to have some collaboration on where a new site might be for that kiosk. And bring it on down more front to center. And that's what we're requesting, is that the town allow us to do that, and assist them in doing that, since. Probably, I think there's a dig safe or something that would have to be contacted, and someone would have to be able to tell us that we actually could put it there. And the second part of the request is, um, as. What happened to the first kiosk is to ask the, the town hygienic department to help us put in that kiosk. When it's done, and the time capsule that will be coming from the, uh, uh, the town, the centennial celebration. So that's, that's what we'd like, and, um, as I said, the kiosk is paid for, it's. It's. Being, it's being done, um, we are getting in some donations, so please feel free, um, you can just drop them off with Kim. And you'll get a nice little bathroom. And you'll get a nice letter back from one of our the volunteers that we certainly can use the money for for that lean two.
The only the only thing you have to be careful is nothing can go in the right way. There's an ordinance in the town that no structure, no, nothing can go in the right way. So just be careful where the sign goes. It cannot be in the in the right way.
Well, that's why we need some collaboration. If Mike can do that or if someone on the on the board would come and collaborate, we can say this is where it can go so that we could just have it visible.
Well, can you do that, Mike? I mean, you know, what show?
When are we talking?
Well, we certainly, we don't want to put it in until August.
So not until August sometime?
Well, we're we, yeah, because we, well, the the kiosk that's there is not in good shape. So we're gonna be putting in a new one. And we can put that time capsule in at the same time and the town picnic is July twenty ninth. So it would be August, September. And maybe by then we'll have even more information. If we go out for a grant, we might hold off until we can get that accessible trail and if we wanted to complement that accessible trail, which is hopefully gonna happen at some point.
It's later out. I mean, we're we're looking to do, it would have to be later on this summer.
Yeah, that's definitely when it would be.
But you can figure out the right way, right?
But if there was some, we just want to make sure since it's being built now, if there was a size restriction.
Really? I mean, what's the thing that you have up there in the parking lot now? Is that the kiosk you're in?
That's that. I don't think it's gonna be that large, but it might be. I'll check with the guys. I know there's been a lot of nice surprises.
Do we need a motion for this? Again, I mean, going to town, all the state has the right of time, it's one we have this.
Okay.
And if Mike's willing to do it, I guess, for the cruise. Yeah.
I have a question on the lean two that's being built. I know I know models outside, it's very not. Perhaps the insurance company and our insurance company is coming around on Thursday that they'll happen to be randomly picked to visit all of our properties. And I'm wondering if we should present the question and ask you, what will this change on our insurance, for one thing? And is it okay to put a structure that was voluntarily put together rather than engineered because it is going on town and public property? That might be an issue too. I need to see your hard work and then tell us it's not acceptable. Because I know our salt shed and our garage, everything we've done has to be engineered because it's public. I don't have our assholes and things. There's a certain value. But what has to be engineered, I don't know. Turbodies were voluntarily done, engineered, that's helpful. But they have to be approved by the state on the plans. It's one on one. And I don't know. I have no idea. I don't want to get caught like and somebody with brother that has to be there. That might be something to be looking to, I guess. Morgan?
They could they could draw a plan and submit it.
Yeah, and submit them to those.
They could draw the plans and submit it.
Yeah, okay. It may not even be an issue. I don't know. We do have the plans. They're on the board. Yeah, on the board now.
I have a report, select.
The people came in on Friday. Next year, we need to read your line item on that because we didn't quite have enough people for a whole day, but it's here. Chart number one has been through the bottom stock. We've got that back already. So those things were repaired in the morning. Replaced two corners on the backside of Fisher Hill. We've now moved over onto Anderson Road and working on grant work over there. And I had the guys go out and start mowing where some of the, well, person that was not brought or the poison person. So that is increasing in town. And you've noticed that some of the fields and some of the landowners probably are having people coming and brush pile there, are bringing it in. So there's a lot of private real estate that's starting to gain poison person around. So it's gonna be hard for us to. They say if you can get it mowed before the seed matures and then mow it a little bit later in the season and do that for two years, you should build it. Get it down.
But that yellowish?
It's yellow, has the, yeah, the bigger flower in there. It's nasty stuff.
This is like a yellow flower?
It's, it almost looks like a cauliflower type bud.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, it kind of hides in there with the buttercups, but it's much larger, much nastier stuff. You don't want to get around it because it burns.
Yeah.
Like worst of poison.
So that's pretty much where we're at right now.
Anybody have anything for Mike? Any question? What is it? Okay, all right. Ken, you have a license dog with it?
I guess, as of according to state statute, I have a G M first and three parts of the slide for any licensed dog. We only have three on the list. So I just need your approval. I'm gonna pass those three on to our animal control officer, Ashley. And she'll follow up on that for the three of what was registered last year. It doesn't, it doesn't show. We don't have the dogs that we have here that now registered. These are just three that have not registered from last year. We did three of those stories. We've had it right sometime. So I just wanted to review the list, let you know. Give it to you and I'm gonna pass it on to Ashley in the year of consent.
So we need a motion to to have Kim pass the unregistered, unlicensed dogs on to the animal control. So moves.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's all you got, Ken?
Uh, yes.
Community reports, there's no personnel there, Kathy?
No, it's still a big national with. No.
Is it, is it?
I assumed it was always at the same time.
Yeah.
So is that the only one that's listening in the morning? We need to talk again.
Right.
Other messages, are there any? Well, any public comment? Now, the next regular meeting will be Monday, July nineteenth at six P M. Here at the, not lost. Motion to adjourn. We leave. Somebody wants seconds? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Both? Thank you for coming, everybody.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three. Or email us at fact eight ten at gmail dot com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.